I would yes.
Yes, I don't have enough.
Okay, any opposed? The passes will have Steve pay for the coaches at Boover's time. And Mr. Allen has something he wants to add.
I have an item on my mind to add. Pro Care Farmers indirect is requesting a penalty waiver on their sales taxes. It's time sensitive. They agreed to pay all the fines and interest and pay the taxes. However, if we don't deal with it tonight, then it forces us to go to mediation, which will cost us to pay for the mediation. So I'm requesting that we add it and accept or grant their waiver on the penalty. This is their first penalty or first time. Move that.
Motion by, um, Mark. Let's see, let's vote.
Can you say yes?
Okay, it passes, so it'll be yes. I need a motion and a second to open the meeting. Motion by who? Richard. Second by Steve. Okay, A, consider and/or recommend actions with regards to amending current long-term sub- thing, Mr. Blanchard.
Yeah, I had a request to investigate how we pay our substitute teachers in comparison to surrounding districts. So I contacted the districts, I got information from them, I think this case, you can have the chart printed out.
Yeah, that'll pass it out.
Uh, they've passed a copy from me. Okay, uh, in St. Martin Parish, we pay a comparable amount for subs and we pay our substitute teachers. Uh, if they're certified, it's one rate. If it's, uh, we pay them eighty-four dollars a day if they're certified. For a degree but non-certified person, it's seventy dollars a day. And for a non-degree person, someone with a high school diploma, it's fifty-five dollars a day. You can see below, uh, that what the surrounding districts pay and you can see that in St. Martin, we are comparable to the other districts, especially when you look at degrees but non-certified and certified. We actually pay more than everybody else for a certified teacher, except Iberia Parish. They pay six dollars a day more than we do. Where Iberia outdoes us the most, or the biggest difference is, is in a degree, non-certified person, they pay twenty dollars a day more. But we're within five dollars of all the surrounding districts. In addition to that, uh, we pay, you see our daily rate for a long-term sub in each one of those categories. We pay a long-term certified teacher two-hundred-twenty-seven dollars a day. A not, a degree, non-certified person, about a hundred-and-fifty-five a day. And a non-degree teacher, a non-degree high school diploma, uh, a hundred-and-twenty-one dollars a day. That's actually, our long-term rates are actually higher than any of the districts listed board. You see Iberia, a degree but non-certified person, they pay them a hundred dollars a day when they do it a long term. And, uh, they pay a certified person a hundred-and-fifty dollars a day, seventy-five dollars a day less than us. Where we're different, the significant difference is that a teacher has to work with us for twenty days before they go to full pay. Uh, they work the daily rate until day twenty, on day twenty-one, then they go to the full-time rate, the higher amounts that are listed. The districts around us, you'll see that Iberia, Lafayette, and Beauregard, uh, on day eleven, you gotta work the ten days, and on day eleven, they go to the higher rate. West Van Gogh responded, they do it at day sixteen, and Vermillion does it on day seven, we do it on day twenty-one. So I don't think we need to change our daily rate or our long-term rates since we're competitive and in some cases higher than other districts. But what I do think we need to do is, what I'm recommending to the board is that we begin the long-term pay on day eleven. Be comparable to the surrounding districts. When somebody works twenty or thirty or forty days, when they get to day twenty-one, they go to full-time pay, and the full-time pay becomes retroactive to day one. So whether you do it on day eleven or day one, at the end of that person's tenure, you're still paying the same amount a month. Going to day eleven gives them a little more security in knowing that they're going to get that full-time pay, that it's gonna be guaranteed on day eleven rather than day twenty-one. I think we're more likely to attract people to keep long-term subs if we do it that way.
Move the exception.
Okay, question. Associate, would that be under a degree?
Uh, no, so a degree is a four-year degree.
Okay.
An associate degree would be non-degree.
Okay, so now, hands start, do they fall into this too?
No, this is, uh, this is regular MFT classroom teacher. They got a Boover's High or St. Warrenville High or whatever.
Okay, now, we also talked about the cafeteria workers. How would that fit?
Okay, I don't, I don't, I wasn't actually researching cafeteria work to pay for Miss Casey and I, we didn't look at it. I think we're comparable to the surrounding districts. Is that correct?
So I think they go like twenty-something days.
Yeah, it was one, and you think of it then.
Oh, no, it was extra. He said it would be the same.
I'd like to clarify this. The ten-day rule, I'd like to make it across the board for all substitutes, whether it's cafeteria teacher, whatever, whatever. Uh, cause that's the rule in other districts, it's for everybody, not just teachers.
Okay, any more questions?
I was a little curious about the non-degree person sub. It's only fifty-five, kinda low compared to the others. Is possible that we could increase that a little bit? Because being a former teacher, it was very important that you had people that come in and fill in when you, teachers are out. A lot of times, it's non-degree.
Our, our daily rate is less, but our long-term rate is more?
Yeah, I did see that.
Long-term rate would kick in at day eleven.
That's ten consecutive days, then.
Right, yeah, I mean, ten consecutive days in that position on day eleven.
I mean, a lot of these people substitute a day, they come back on, on Friday, come back the next week on a Wednesday. I'd just like to see it go up one, if that's possible.
That's a board decision.
How much?
What do you, what do you consider?
I would like to up that to seventy dollars.
Seventy dollars for non-degree?
Right.
That would put you in the board.
Oh, I see, we're a little higher on the degree, okay. Let's go sixty-five then. And we stay below the, the degree person.
St. Mary's sixty and St. Mary's fifty-one. We're in between those two, we can go sixty-five if we need to. Let's see.
Still be making five dollars less than a degree certified.
So, we have to add that one to it?
Well, we might have to, I think, just increasing the, uh, amount of funds.
Well, I think you have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we have a motion.
You need to make a substitute motion.
Okay, I'd like to make substitute motion that, I agree, set sixty, non-degree to sixty-five, which would be low for a degree person.
Okay, a motion, I need a second.
If you go sixty, I think you probably get a second.
Okay, you want to try and say?
Try and say.
I need a motion, I need a second.
I'll say that second.
Okay, we're to second.
Thank you.
Let's vote.
I have a second.
Any opposed? None.
Yes.
Oh, yes. What? Oh, second. Okay.
We need to vote on the original motion, yeah. We need to vote on the original motion.
Okay.
For the ten days.
A motion by Mark?
Yes.
Second by Richard? Let's vote. We'll go with the first one, because it passes. So then, does he get a? Huh?
I'm sorry.
You want yes? Okay, so we'll stay with the original motion. Um, so the, on the last, on the first one, you had to hit no.
Yeah.
You wanted to hit yes? No, okay. All right, okay, so be, consider and/or recommend actions with regards to staff recommendations for bus purchase. Your ESSER fund, is Derek saying that?
Yes, uh, when we received the funds for ESSER, what we did, we petitioned the board, the state, uh, one-point-five million, the French bus. And thus far, we got approved, and this is for three years. This year, twenty-one, twenty-two, year twenty-two, twenty-three, and year twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, and we came in under budget. Uh, the first year, we had four-hundred-and-forty-five dollars, one-hundred-seventy-seven dollars, ninety-eight cents, that's five buses, uh, four record buses and one fed bus. Uh, year twenty-two, twenty-three is the same amount. And in year twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, there's an added surcharge of three-thousand dollars per bus, but we're not buying a special ed bus. So we still came in at four-hundred-and-forty thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, thirty-five cents. Now, out of the one-point-five million, we still have a savings of a hundred-and-seventy thousand left to the good. So we'll be getting fifteen buses in three years from the ESSER fund, not Austin, Ward, or Dodge. And we still gonna realize a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in savings.
Any questions? Steve?
All the hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, hundred-and-seventy dollars is gonna stay, uh, your.
You can, you can realize it for something else. We could also request to buy another, another bus, but we have to, uh, we have to go through ESSER. We, we asked for fifteen, so to buy sixteen, we just have to give, so there's a difference.
Steve?
Mr. D, you gonna go five buses?
We're gonna have five buses per year for three years.
All right, they gonna, they gonna honor the amount per bus for them three years?
Yes, sir. We obviously asked for one-point-five. And each year, we guarantee five-hundred thousand. We realize a savings of a hundred-and-seventy thousand out of the one-point-five million.
Yeah, but they guarantee the price for three years.
We guarantee the price.
It's a no-brainer. We have to do it.
That was correct.
Yeah, right.
That's Mark. And this is, uh, it's just a question, I mean, every, every time one of our football teams are in, maybe even basketball, a lot of these clubs or organizations will rent charter these, I call it a Greyhound bus, holdout bus, whatever. And those prices on those buses have gotten, I, let's put it this way, probably in two thousand and five, it was probably about eleven-hundred dollars on those buses, for one bus. Now, I think it might be towards the five thousand, uh, for, I'm, I'm, at this morning, this morning, I, I don't know, I didn't find out. And to me, those buses are almost identical to a school bus, with the exception of a rational and air-conditioned. That's about the only two differences, and I was just wondering how much more would an air-conditioned bus be? You know, and I'm not saying just for that event or anything, I, I'm just trying to figure out, because some, some of these schools might be in the bad, they may be in the playoffs, but they might not be able to afford that five-thousand, ten-thousand dollar bill that they keep getting, but again, it's a, it's the end thing. So I was just curious, I don't know how much, what an, an air-conditioned would run on those buses.
Well, I can do research, but.
Yeah, just, and just, and the, it's just a question, just to try to save money on these blood organizations. It's hot. Hot and something.
But the good thing about it is when the football playoffs, basketball, that's all cooler times of the year.
Right.
So, and right now, I don't know that our policy allows for us to basically use blood, or basically reuse buses for that purpose. So if the board's interested in having, you can go back to the proposed policy for.
It was just a random question.
Will we get research into it?
Any more questions?
How it affect our insurance and there's not, that, do you have a problem?
Uh, oh, Mr. D.
As these ESSER funds are being used for transportation buses, uh, doesn't come under the same heading as, uh, vehicle maintenance? These can be used for transportation and buses coming under that heading, you know, a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars. There's additional needs in the maintenance department for vehicles, they may be used for full purpose.
With the ESSER funds, it's like any federal fund, you limit it in how you can spend, how much you can spend along. So it has to be tied to, uh, some sort of COVID relief. Like, we have purchased a couple of vehicles for delivery of food, for, uh, contact tracing, stuff like that. So, and like with the buses, we're purchasing an additional fifteen buses. But the main reason for purchasing them is so that, like, for athletic events, you have more buses available to bring kids into social distance. You have to be aware of your mind, you have to tie it into something of that nature, for social distancing, or some sort of COVID protocol.
So if I can hook into and tie in a COVID protocol to a maintenance vehicle, if I can do that and it's acceptable, you would take a look at it?
Yeah, that's possible. All right.
Any more questions? I need a motion and a second to vote.
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Mr. Jenny, let's vote. Uh, D, consider and/or recommend actions with regards to additional of those data systems analysis, Mr. Foster?
Yes, um, uh, we are asking, uh, also with the ESSER funds, we're asking to add, uh, a data position. Uh, this would fall underneath, uh, the technology department, but it is across the board. This person would be a professional person, um, and they would have the background to be able to do analysis and so forth. We've had increased needs, as you know, due to COVID and so forth, uh, with both data reporting, all of the data needs, remote learning, um, also, we've been, had to increase a whole lot of things in, in regards to digital curriculum, which in turn goes into how does it connect to all of these systems? Um, how do we nightly make sure that all of our students are also connected and have curriculum? Um, and then, how do we also make sure that it's effectively happening when we have to go on in and off of virtual, or if we would have to go to hybrid especially in those type of situations? Uh, this is a three-year position, just like the rest of the ones that are with the ESSER funds. Um, but basically, that's it. It would, uh, it would be an impact for all of our schools. It wouldn't be just one department, because this person would be proficient in all of our different systems. Ollie, J-Campus, and the other curriculums that they talk with each other with the class.
Any questions, Mark?
Uh, I have some opposition to Christine. And one of, to me, we've just, and, and you answered one of my questions, because one of my questions would be, what happens when the ESSER funds runs, runs, runs out? You said it's a three-year deal. But the one thing that I'm afraid of is everyone come back and say, can we implement this into the general plan? And out of all the raises that we gave this past year, I feel that, this is just my opinion, that we need to all step up to the plate and start going a little bit. And I know it's the three years ESSER fund, but I, I'm still, and again, I might not even be around, but I want for the next person in this position to, to have to fight a budget battle, because we did increase from supervisor to directors on down. We gave up a lot of healthy raises this year. And, and I consider them healthy, you know, uh, for what it is, and that's my concern that, you know, we, we've always given out, and then a couple of years ago, and I'm saying to you personally, but the IT, the IT department, came in and basically told us that we eliminated the position, and we gave off some raises in that department, okay? Not long after, six months, a year later, maybe even two years later, we come back, we adding a position. So we really didn't cut any positions.
Well, actually, we did. Uh, in both instances, positions were cut to.
So you remember that, right?
Yes, I did. Uh, the one, one was before me and one was after.
That's why I didn't vote.
Yeah.
That's why I had to say the way I said it, I don't know if it was a wrong view or not.
No, one was before me, one was after, but I do respect, I do feel like everybody has stepped up to the plate and is working well beyond to be able to do all of the reporting needs. A lot of things have been added on, PEBT, which was never in existence before, is now in existence, and it's something that we have to deal with daily. Um, in three years, I can't tell you, I may not be here in three years.
That's all I ask is that, whoever's in that position, don't come back to the board and say, well, we had this position, we, we need a budget in there, don't, don't. And I'm not saying I about it, but just be honest, we didn't, it was through ESSER funds, and we're gonna add it to the budget now, if, if it's a fourth in that.
Right, I don't know where we look at in three years, I can't, I don't have the crystal ball, I can't tell you that. However, I can tell you where we are at these needs, with everybody stepping up to the plate and working beyond their hours of what we pay for, we are in crisis and we would need this person. But I also have to tell you honestly, I feel like this would be a huge benefit for our schools, our students, and all of our departments, because with the expertise of this person, this person can do true analysis on is remote, how the remote work, how remote learning is, and how's it working? And is this particular program working well with our Chromebooks and so forth like that?
We're gonna have to advertise this, or you have somebody in also, maybe that's.
As for, um, I think, Mr. Blanchard, I would have to ask, I think this is an advertisement, I do not have anyone in mind.
I agree with technology, but at the same time, also.
I understand, I have to work, I have to work within my budget as well, I totally understand. I, I don't have anyone in mind, no, that would be Mr. Blanchard.
Basically, you would be advertising.
Yes, but it would, I want to be clear, it's not solely technology.
Yeah, that's forty-one thousand, so we're gonna be.
Yes, it's a paraprofessional position, I mean, it's a professional position. He, and the question was, would we be advertising for the position?
I didn't know we had anybody. Would you agree with Mark, when you say it's forty-one thousand, they're not eight, is that the person that Mark, uh, experienced?
We built that, we built that in, so that would be the top. We built it in, if you look at the scale, you, that scale brings that person dependent on what experience and what they bring to St. Martin Parish and it goes to their duties.
Up to forty-seven thousand.
Up to forty-seven, yes. And that's all within budget.
Mr. Nak, you have a question? No? You know what? I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Richard, let's vote.
I'm gonna.
It passes, oh, you.
I just.
Okay.
I'm gonna convert it to the same time I don't want.
It passes. Okay, D, consider and/or recommend actions with regards to allow staff to proceed with the B/ S process for attached项目project, Mr. Blanchard.
In fact, in December, I handed out all of this, uh, to board members of projects in their areas, because the list that the board had already approved and discussed. But as we, uh, begin the spring and move into summer, I wanted a final and formal approval on it so that Mr. Pete and Mr. Derrisell can begin the process of getting bids and quotes for these projects, and bids for the higher amounts, quotes for the lower amounts, so that when school ends in May, on the twenty-fifth, we can have contracts signed, and that's a contract that's gonna begin working, so the work can get done before school starts.
Any questions?
Yeah, Mark, just wanted to be, I'm coming in this area, there was a couple of things that didn't have to be included, just, like, what was the, uh, I see right here, the Dash Elementary School, fifty thousand dollars, but there's twenty thousand, how's that?
Fifty thousand is, uh, the cost of the shell to build and the electrical and other working side, Mr. Pete, I discussed it. He feels that in our minds, twenty thousand is the cost of materials, a pretty estimated role on our, in contributing.
So we will be doing some of that, bro.
I try to save a few dollars. I got one more. I think, uh, I know it's a couple of items, we got a little elementary, uh, those could be started before summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, there may be some things that we can do at some of the schools, because if they don't interfere with the movement, you guys are gonna see the issues. You can begin on, on to your quote. All right, but most of them are gonna have to be done here, just, okay?
Okay, I need a motion and a second. Motion by, it's, Paul T. Second by Richard. Let's vote. Richard? You vote? No opposed, it passes. Uh, D, consider and/or recommend actions with, pay for the coaches at Boover's time? Mr. Jenny?
Motion.
A question?
No, question, I mean, was the.
Okay.
The only thing is, I'd like to add, try to, if, if staff can give the guidance as soon as possible. It'll get. Ten days.
Ten days. Okay, let's vote. The test, somebody opposes, so yes, consider and/or recommend actions with regard to approve of sales tax penalties for Pro Care Pharmacy.
Approved SAK's recommendation.
Uh, second by, uh, first by, uh, Mark, second by D, let's vote. The test is now opposed. I need a motion to close the meeting. Motion by Steve, second by Richard. You starting?
Second by Brad. Uh, so this business, uh, Brad has been getting ready and furthering, uh, getting to the legislature school, board office, and, uh, older office. Uh, we're gonna declare all offices closed at this time, uh, we'll give the guy to, uh, the president.
Okay, uh, do we have a nomination for board president?
I have to make a motion for Richard.
Nomination's closed. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, nomination's closed. Congratulations.
We have a nomination for vice president, the, the board of vice president.
Nominate Wanda.
Wanda, in the square.
Morgan Bay.
Morgan Bay. Stand.
In the, Morgan Bay.
This show, a hand for Wanda, vice president. Can we show a hand for, just the Eben, vice president? Well, Eben is vice president. Well, right now, we're gonna go from the floor, I mean, well, I'm gonna nominate my friend as the next board member, but I'm gonna go ahead and nominate, uh, finance, uh, Richard.
Oh, that you nominated Wanda, she did a good job this year.
Well.
I thought Richard, as a woman, you don't ever have a woman.
Well, we would.
We made a woman.
I was gonna nominate Mr. Ward.
Mr., uh.
I was gonna nominate Mr. Ward, not, uh, finance.
You don't want?
I was like, Ward, yeah.
Okay, but it, it's, it's, well, it's president who nominates.
Okay.
At your point.
Okay, I'm, so, I'm a point as the next, the finance, I had two persons ask me. And, uh, the education, I can announce that right now, uh, this.
Edna Johnson.
Johnson. Vegas, Steve, or, uh, or you, you wanna name? Johnson, okay, Vegas, Steve, or, uh, oh, you, you nominated? Okay, nominated me. Well, then, I'll nominate Mr. Great as finance, because he, you know, that's why I did do finance, I'm not, uh. Okay, and transportation, Steve, so we got a lot of finance committee today.
Okay.
Announcement and acknowledgements.
Okay, uh, we do have one announcement, uh, since we're back in school, the numbers, COVID, COVID numbers have gone up quite a bit. Uh, today, we had a spike at Brookridge High, we had, as of about one o'clock this afternoon, we had an assistant principal, counselor, two teacher aides. And I think it was thirteen teachers out with COVID. So tomorrow, Friday and Monday, Brookridge High will be closed, the students at Brookridge High will be on virtual. On Monday, we will revisit the numbers and determine if we have enough staff to reopen. I was over there today around lunchtime, and there were barely enough staff members to monitor the students. Uh, Mr. Blanchard did wherever he's at, I think he stepped out, but, uh, they did, the faculty, the staff, the school nurse, everybody involved, they did an excellent job today of monitoring the students. There were so many students that were COVID positive, they did, and contact tracing was not even possible. Because, you know, when you start contact tracing, who met up with who, there were so many, you just couldn't do the tracing. But I'm afraid that tomorrow, if a couple more people test positive, we're not gonna have enough staff to monitor the students, so it'd be there. At one point, Mr. Blanchard pulled some, all of his coaches on with COVID, he pulled a sped teacher, put him in the gym. That coach, that person had four classes in the gym with him at one time. So we're getting to a point where it's dangerous. The current COVID guidelines call for five days of quarantine, and then you return to the mask for five days. So that's what I'm gonna impose at Brookridge High, it'll be closed, uh, three school days and two weekend days, that'll be five days on Monday. If we have enough staff to reopen, we'll reopen Tuesday. And they'll wear the mask the remainder of the week, until this time's done, and then they'll come back the following week, mask free, providing the numbers of that. We currently, as of the start of the meeting, have two other schools in the district that were just below the ten percent mark? That we, the board set as a policy for going back to mask wear. Uh, E L C was at about eight and a half percent, and that number was steadily rising, and Stevensville Mineral is at nine percent. So, uh, just to kind of keep you all up to date, the, the negative side of it is we have a lot of people getting sick, and they're getting sick pretty fast. Positive side of it is they're not getting really sick, it's more like cold symptoms. And it is spreading so fast that hopefully we'll reach the peak and come right back down within a couple of weeks, and hopefully get back to normal as quickly as we can, so.
Do you mind about making the comment that, uh, I made to you on the phone today?
No, I won't.
Uh, we were just drinking, speaking, the super didn't today, and I have two grandchildren, they, uh, go to one of the schools in Latvia. And they went up until the Wednesday before Christmas, yeah, before Christmas, and they're not going back to school until this coming month. So it may be something to consider when we do the calendar, I know it might not be popular, but you figure if we're, if we're interacting with people for Christmas and New Years. Well, if New Years, we went, basically Monday, we were back at school, but it's only two days right there. Whereas if we go a whole week, it gives a chance for it to keep the, the community at their house, basically, instead of going back to the school so quick. It's just something to think about, so, and, I mean, I never thought about it before, but I'm talking to the coworker, and he said, man, that's a great idea, would you? I mean, as a parent, I don't know which way would be better, but, uh, it's just something, and again, hopefully by this time next year, this is all a moot point for us, just prepared for the future. Anyone else? I just wanted to comment, honestly, to me that we allow employees of coming down with COVID. Uh, the sick, additional sick leave that we give, we don't give that pride to their regular sick leave.
What I'm gonna, what I'm gonna start going on, unless the board shuts me down on it, is when somebody's out, sometimes we can get a sub. Sub at best usually just gives a worksheet and continue to do the work. If the teacher's at home and is not so sick that they can't work, if they open to a classroom and teach from their house from eight to three, like you would on a normal day. You have a sub in the class watching it, and a teacher teaching it from home, so the children are getting most of the normal instruction. I'm not gonna talk into that, maybe a big word for a whole morning.
Right. We move on to subs, scripters, while you.
Okay, our southern script's employing a month this month, uh, is the bus shop crew, the maintenance is on. Uh, Mr. D, did you nominate him? Okay, it must be Miss Tina. Okay, I'll, I'll just say a few quick words, uh, we have three guys in the bus shop, where in one town, we had five or six, James Boyd, Gary LeBlanc, and Troy Johnson. And, uh, you know, in the system, you have a lot of people that sometimes you don't see what they do, and these are three of those guys. When a bus driver goes to get on their bus at six o'clock or six fifteen in the morning, and the bus doesn't start, the system gets called. They go out and they try to get that bus started, so the bus can run the route. Very often, we don't see that, but they're out there very early, and they come back to the shop, and they still work the normal day. So just for everybody to know, these three guys were nominated, and, and they do go above and beyond. You know, the first in call morning, we leave the house an hour earlier to sort the bus, you know, that's admirable, so congratulations to these guys.
Who are they?
Well, uh.
What are their names?
James Boyd, Gary LeBlanc, and Troy Johnson.
Okay.
Okay, they're just getting on board as well. Yeah, that's true. Uh, okay, well, congratulations. Addition and deletion to that dinner, uh, any addition? Okay, there's no dinner, with, uh, adds to be removed from the concept of dinner. Anyone have any adds that they want to discuss today?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, we will go from A to E.
Do you mind back to Mr. Blanchard a question?
What?
Mr. Blanchard, I want to eat, consider our approval of adopting L S B A COVID conduct. Never mind, it's the National Association.
Right, okay, but it's a long question, okay, never mind. Okay, all right, we need a motion from A to E and G. Motion, talking about Mr. James, I want all in favor, I hope, we cannot lose either. And A, Mr. Carrick. I have, uh, one, yeah.
Oh, I wanted to know what it's all about. What?
Okay, um, that District Twenty, Senate District Twenty Two is Freddie Mills District. That has traditionally been predominantly in St. Martin, Liberia Parish. And with the new census and the rezoning, they're trying to pull some of that district into Latvia. So we would lose some of that district to Latvia Parish. So Liberia, the delegation from Liberia and St. Martin are requesting that we do a resolution in support of peaking in the Senate District here at St. Martin and in Liberia. So they're trying to.
Yeah, schools, yeah, there's another, they're, it's about rapid to be, yeah, the Senate, they'll have two Senate for that.
Yeah, just to try to keep that representation here, okay?
I'll make a motion.
We've got motion about the three bunch, second, second by, uh, all in favor, vote from the seat. And A, a motion, Gary. Finance Committee recommendations, we take out of A through there, we're gonna have a problem. Move to each other, motion about Mr. David, second by Steve, all in favor. Bill McSee, and then one, and A, motion, Gary. New business. I pre-ordered the book from Shaw, Ryan &amp; Company for the fiscal year ended June thirty, two thousand twenty one. It's a show of fun, but it's been a while. Nation, should you go here, or here, or anywhere you want. But if you have a thing, I have a bigger in your front, you want to dress like you can stand here, you can come here, wherever you feel comfortable.
Thank you all, as Mr. Pochy said, haven't seen you in a while, it's been a year, uh, hope everyone is doing well over the holidays, good for y'all. Uh, y'all should have each been handed out a package, uh, today before the meeting, and I know we have some slides as well. Do we have slides for the whole thing, that we started with the graphs?
We can get back to that, we can get back to that, but.
No, okay. Everybody should have this.
There you go.
That one, that one, the one, huh?
Yes, and if you turn one page, I'll, I'll ask you, I'll tell you when to turn. Uh, and in the lower right-hand corner window, will be the numbers of the pages that we're, that we're referring to. So on this page, if you could scroll, uh, down a little, so I can see the top part, I'm sorry, the other way, uh, here. You can see it's highlighted for your independent audit report, I always begin with this, which is the most important thing that is, that is, uh, part of your audit report. It's our opinion on your financial statements, and if you scroll down to the next page now, at the top of the paper, it's highlighted, it says opinions. That is our opinion on the financial statements for the St. Martin Parish School Board for the fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand twenty one. Uh, it indicates that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is what is known as a clean or unmodified audit opinion. Uh, having said that, uh, I'll, I'll stop right here, take a little pause and just tell you, before we go further with, with the, the information up on the front slides. Uh, the audit went well this year, uh, as I indicate here, we do have a clean, unmodified audit opinion. The financial statements are slightly more favorable than they were last year, so you did a little bit better financially this year, and I'll, I'll show you some, uh, information regarding that momentarily. Your net position, all funds of the school board, all funds, all assets, all liabilities combined, your net position improved by about half a million dollars this year. So that's better than you did last year. Uh, last year, I actually had a, a decrease in your net position. Uh, this year, this is not stuff you're gonna find in your practice, but the audit did bring some new challenges, or I should say, ongoing challenges, naturally with COVID. Just heard a report from the superintendent, uh, unfortunately, it's causing problems for a lot of people, it caused problems here, it caused problems in the schools. In addition to that, you have some challenges, because you can receive a lot more funding, a lot more federal funding this year, which is good. But it caused a lot more accounting work and a lot more, uh, hoops to jump through, more eyes to dot and keys to cross. So there were challenges with that, you had a lot more funds, uh, in federal funds, uh, specifically from SIR funds and from your Head Start program. Uh, and then you also had some personnel changes in, in your business office, which caused some challenges as well. The audit is not yet complete, we're typically here to issue the final audit report to you and present it to the L C of Audit. I know Mr. Blanchard informed you, I think at the last meeting, that we would request an extension on your behalf, we did that, and that was obtained with the L C of Audit's office. Reason for that is specifically the SIR funds. The SIR funds are new, are there, you received a whole lot more funding this year. That and Head Start are part of what's called your major programs in your federal funds, so they're subject to specific testing for compliance and internal control issues. We had to wait on guidance to audit those SIR funds, because we were told there's going to be additional guidance coming, which is a supplement. Uh, and it's put out by that O M B, which is the Office of Management and Budget, it's a federal, a federal government. That guidance, although we kept being told it was coming, we did not receive it till December third, which is a Friday at night. And so we had to get the information, naturally, we had to read the information, understand the information, and then design some tests of your accounting records? To adhere with the testing that they said was needed. So that, plus you during the Christmas holidays, there simply wasn't time to get it done. We decided collectively that the smart move was to do it properly and request an extension with L C of Audit's office. Uh, so I thought we should explain that to you exactly what took place. We do plan to complete the testing shortly, in the next few weeks, and wrap up your audit at the end of this month or early the following. We did get a full cooperation from Mr. Blanchard and from Casey, so we thank him for that. So I went to just call timeout and explain all that to you, any questions about that before I proceed? If not, uh, we will scroll down, the next page is simply the final page of the audit report, so we will pass that, and you should be on page five. Well, it's too far, right? What page are you on?
Blank page.
We have a blank page? Okay.
No, five.
You're at five, there you go, there's five, okay. If you notice the items that are highlighted, these are items that are complete, the items that are, are have the, the red box, that has to do with the federal funds that I just told you about. So the single audit portion, the federal fund is not complete, everything is substantially complete, except the SIR testing, everything else is pretty much done. But the items that are highlighted are complete, they don't have anything to do with federal funds, uh, unmodified opinion was issued, I've mentioned that before. Uh, inventory of weakness was not disclosed, that's favorable, and material non-compliance was not disclosed, that's favorable. Down at the bottom, the highlighted portion as well, there are the findings required to be reviewed. The items boxed in red will be completed, as I mentioned, and then we'll issue a final, uh, report based on those items. Okay, next page, every year for the last several years, we've touched on this, uh, has to do with misappropriations of funds which took place in, uh, fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand sixteen. We give you an update each year, and if you look at the second highlighted, the third highlighted item, we say that although the finding does not completely resolve as of June thirty, two thousand twenty one. The only open component of the matter is the restitution owed by the school board. And unfortunately, not much progress, zero progress, excuse me, from last year to this year, in order to.
And that's left us with a law, right?
That's correct, and every year, we suggest that you contact the district attorney's office, and every year, y'all do, and then we follow up on it, follow up. There's not much you can do about that, unfortunately. Okay, so we look at a few numbers, we got, won't waste too much time on this, but we do want to show you these. You can see that we present numbers for two thousand twenty one off to the right, we present selective totals for two thousand twenty. You can see that the total assets are two hundred eleven million, future of years continuing down, you can see that your liabilities are three hundred twenty eight million this year, three twenty three last year. And down at the bottom, your net position basically remains the same. As I mentioned earlier, it improved about five hundred thousand dollars, so basically the same, and if you turn the page to the next page. I would like for you to look towards the bottom, the third number from the bottom, you see the five hundred twenty two thousand, that's the net improvement from last year, the, the second to last column from the right. The five hundred twenty two thousand is the net improvement in your net position this year. Last year, off to the right, you can see that number was a negative three point six million dollars. So try to turn around this year, four point one million dollars. Next, we'll look at the fund level financial statements, we're always focused on your general fund. On this page is the assets and liabilities and equity of the general fund and your other governmental funds. If you look in the general fund column, you can see that your assets are forty four million, your liabilities are nine point eight million, your fund balance is thirty four million, thirty four six thirty one. On the next page, we're not gonna go there just yet, but we will, oh, you can go ahead, let's go there, and we'll come back. Look at the general fund column, look at this third number from the bottom, one point five million, that's how much your general fund improved over last year. So when you combine that with the prior your fund balance, you end up with thirty four six thirty one, that's the ending fund balance for your general fund. Now go back to the previous page, and if you look at the bottom, where it says note, you have indicated futures, we do this every year. How many months of reserve do you have in your fund balance, how many months of expenditures do you have? And the number that's presented there equates about six point five months of operating expenditures. We, we usually recommend that you have no less than three to four months, so you're actually above that threshold. Okay, we've already looking at page ten, so let's go to the graphs. The first one is your revenues by type, and you can see we have your non-program revenues, which is, uh, the largest portion, and that is mostly M F P funds. You have your taxes, you have your program revenues, which are mostly federal programs, and you have other revenue. Next is the expenditures. You have instruction, which is the largest part, you have other support, which is the next largest, and fine revenues. But again, instruction is the largest part of your expenditures. And finally, we have your fund balance. And finally, we have your fund balance, the comparison of the last five years plus the current year. And in red is what's reserved or assigned. What's in, I guess that's green, is committed. And then what's blue is your unreserved or unassigned portion. So when we tell you that you have 34 million in your general fund fund balance, and that you have six and a half months expenditures, that is correct, but it includes all of the components. The reason I'm pointing that out is the red part is not free and clear for you to spend. The green part is money that you've said you've put aside for emergencies. And so the blue part is really what's free and clear and available for you to spend, unless you change your policy regarding the green part. Okay, any questions about anything that I've thought over? I'll be happy to try to answer that for you.
Any questions? Everybody do with the money. How are you? That's it?
Okay. All right, thank you all very much, we appreciate y'all.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, good morning.
Thank you.
Allen B., consider approved this for the Policy Council recommendation, vaccination policy exemption form. Do you have recommendations for this? Come on in.
These are a...
I forgot to go to these, your name, not that.
What was that?
I see your name on that.
Oh, sorry, just that, it's that, I think y'all know who's going to talk about this first. So what you have is a minutes from our last Policy Council meeting. We were required with our COVID vaccination policy. And so we got a copy of that, along with what exemptions could be allowed, the two forms that we would use for the vaccinations, as well as some additional new hires that we need to put in place. That are recommendations from the interview panel that did that. So there's nothing really, it was a quick meeting, all Policy Council members were pretty much in a group. We are currently right now on a hold in reference to the vaccine policy, based on what recently happened, which is a few days ago. But we still need to have a policy in place to move forward depending on what is in hand. So we're asking you to accept Policy Council recommendation for this.
Motion to accept. Okay, we got motion from Mr. Potting, sorry to take you by Mr. Steve. Oh. And ladies, one lady did not attend the day. Motion Garrett. Allen C., Mr. Blanchard, consider or approve amendment job description of the state, I mean, sales tax admission or supervisor's position to manager or comp position, comp position.
Okay. For most of the existence of the sales tax department, the person that administered that department, the person in charge of it was fell under an accompaniment position on our salary schedule and job description. Several years ago, was moved to supervisor level position, which required a master's degree. And I'd like to come back to having it as a manager slash comp. Sales tax has its own unique laws and requirements, processing it and doing the auditing process. So even if you hired CPA, that person's going to have to learn the sales tax department and what the laws are and the requirements are. So I'm more interested in having somebody who knows how to do the job than having somebody with a master's degree. It does not require a master's degree by law. In the past, our administrators did not have a master's degree, some of them didn't even have a college degree. So I'm requesting that we go back to the old scale, the old salary scale, the old job description, so that we can broaden our search a little bit, and somebody with their right kind of experience who knew all their masters degrees, to be able to be hired, just enough.
Yeah, I think it's a good move to then. I mentioned it earlier a couple of years ago, that we should have a manager of food service, a manager of transportation, a manager of maintenance. The only district was, this is already corrected. That one would be based on, is that the one you, based on teacher scale?
No, no, the manager.
I don't think it should be, because again, when you appoint managers, we only have one maintenance manager, you only have one food service manager, you only have one sales tax manager. And those, the salaries could vary based on demand and supply. Not based on teacher scale, that I think would...
What we did with Ms. Casey and I, when we got together, the manager's salary schedule was the same manager's salary schedule we used for the other manager positions. And the account salary schedule is the same company's salary schedule we use. So it just depends on the person's, the nature of their education, that they have a POC or a bachelor's, that's what we've done with the salary schedule we've done. We use the existing salary schedules, again.
Any more questions? The question is then, who? Who? And by this day, that's second by this is them. Both? Then it is, Motion Garrett. Both members request, not discuss appeal.
All right. If it's probably even shorter, so possible. You know, after everything, the last board meeting, number seven, about what I call the unjust importance of which is anymore than our school. And I'll make comments, personal comments, but as I leave, people will talk to me to call me afterward. So some of this won't be my personal comments, and some will be facts. But unlike the last two board meetings, I do intend to make a motion in the very next, so don't call us. One of the is, no, about how long do you, you know, there's some changes with the legal department last board meeting. About how long do you think all of this will take? And my answer to that has not changed at all. Six to seven years before we compete. Why, well, we've been there, I think for six, seven years, and we have only four, five, four of the green factors completed, and we're by halfway there, right? And I have, now why, sometimes I call it components, sometimes I call it segments. But I think in the, in this book with the furniture, the paid document, it says green factors. Now, I think I figured out why they call it green factors. There's a lot of green gobs for alternative people, I think the good thing for, all right, so anyway. Now, again, I'll disagree with you, but I think in the next three or four years, the Justice Department will bring in first thought and next thought, as far as this, and I'm justified with it all. Secondly, in the next six years, well, in four years from today, I predict that none of us will be sent in this state. Most of us are turning in at the first part. So and in four years from now, you get a brand new board, Justice Department comes in, and it is going to delete, I think it's going to delete. Now, as far, again, this is my personal opinion, it could take even longer than six, seven years. But in fairness, if we value, we may have changed in the legal, it could be, it could be a difference. But my personal opinion, I'd be six, seven years. Now, it could be short because of the Oliver application. Now, I have reviewed the board order, I brought it here, and it can be summarized, we're ready. All of this can be summarized in one word, catapult. Or we could summarize in four words, closed catapult or else. When one reads a paid document, how often do you hear the term? It must be closed because of prior de jour segregation. Now, the de jour, to me, that sounds more like a French up here drink or Italian dish. But they keep on referring to this de jour. Now, I'm going to translate that in Caucasian English. What does it mean when they say prior de segregation? It means in Caucasian English, a hundred years ago, a group of people got together and they say, who's going to open this school and catapult for what's on it? And I disagree with them, because I am a person who attended Viprocar School. I know Fred Carter attended Anderson. And I just didn't think that that is the reason why they opened that hood. So what I did is, I started checking, oh, and by the way, during the trial, Mr. Fattner tried to show the real history of catapults. And he did not allow him to speak, to kind of explain why that hood, the bad one, that hood was formed. They said he was too con- constructional, but there he was, it was then they didn't get near there. Now, I know that we all hope for a very quick resolution. And the tougher person, I always hope for the best, but prepare for the worst. So I decided to check records from the courthouse, and there is nothing in the deeds about catapults, schools, and race. In the 1960s, eight schools were closed in my district alone. Following board policy, all of these schools, those schools were either returned to the original homeowners if the school had, the property had been donated, and if it was sold, the school kept it. Now, how does this affect that hood school property? Is it, is it, now, the, that hood, the opening that hood school, the school board bought two pieces of properties from the Martin family. In 1937, the board acquired a tract of school construction from the Martin family for the sum of $480. In 1974, the board acquired another tract from the same family for $8,700 to construction buildings. Now, in the event that we are unsuccessful in the appeal, six, seven years now, the property will remain to the school board and not returned to previous owners. It is a, in the final result, the school remains, called the owners of, the taxpayer owners, the school board. And the school board has, in my sense, no less than a $5 million investment. So we need to think, so I'm thinking about, in the event that we're accepted, what do we do? Now, I propose that we, that the people in that hood provide some kind of input to the administration and school board. What would, and this can do it without any board architect, what would the community like to do with that property? I think this is somewhat said, more, used it for economic development. So over the next few years, let's know how you feel about, I've heard a lot of things that we've had, as a nursing home, various ideas, I have no idea, but the people, the community, they've had some kind of ideas. But irregardless, and we give you examples, even if they won't procure, the school be considered, you would say, an earth hole. We still have to go through a legal process, right? And we look once, and we did all the schools that were closed in the 1960s. Now, do we wait five, six, seven years from now, or do we get our attorney, start the surgery and then registration? What process will we use in the event that it closes? Now, if you read this 36th page document, it says that property cannot be used for any other school, as we opened. And the thing goes even further, we cannot lease that property, lease that property, except to anyone who's going to open a child's school. But let me just say, I disagree with them. No reason why it cannot be sold, in my opinion, now we have a attorney over here. Again, why wait? So I think what we should do is ask our attorney to request a legal opinion of the use of properties for a child's school in the general. Now, I would word it to the point it is not a request for that hood. For example, any other school that we may want to grow down in future, or it, and it is example, my area. Suppose we want to convert or sell, close, put a rare school to, move it, I think it's considered six months ago, and we want to sell that property to a child's school. Is that legal? I don't know, but you can ask the very general question from the attorney general. I don't know how long it'll take, I don't know if it can be worded. Now, I'm not an expert on child's school, there are child's schools, there are board operators. And there are some that we could sell, sell property and let them operate. I don't want to be captain, some of you may be expert, but that is my motion, that we just ask the attorney to request a legal opinion to the attorney general as to what can we do with properties that put you in the recontrol school. That's it?
I'd like to say something on that.
Sorry. First of all, I think, I think we're jumping the gun a bit.
Sir?
I think we're jumping the gun a little bit. I think we're, and I can appreciate what you're talking about, but I think now that the attorney general has jumped on board with us, I think we need to let these people get to work and see how things go in the next few months before starting to open up other avenues. Because I think what they're going to be doing is going to be helping us. And possibly, in the meantime, when we do have any freedom, those questions can be asked. But they haven't even began to fight the fight yet. They're just starting, I think we're at a given time before we start researching that avenue.
May I say something?
Floyd, you know, you had your research.
Sir?
You had your research on why the school, did you research why the school was built in that hood?
Yeah, I made a note, because they keep on saying it was built because even the area wanted the, I mean, we opened the school to make sure that it is segregated. Now, Steve, this is coming back in 1960, you were probably also, in this period, we have some schools. The property is donated for the expect use of education, because it was, and it would surprise me if I were a courthouse, that I'm going to find some school where a black person, a white person, donated for explicit use of a tip. So it would have surprised me if it was put out, but that one did not, it was from the Martin family. All right, let me finish my explanation. When the levee was built, there was a school in BioCorruption. Right, but that, that school had all these people, which was a lot of people in baseball. Well, they all had to move out there in '27. Where did they move? That hood. So they built the school to accommodate all the people that were messed, messed up for the '27 club because they built the levees, the core engineers built the levees. It wasn't, they were not built for desegregation, they were built because those people in those other levees, who were they? They were trappers. They picked moss.
They were lawyers.
My own grandfather would tell me stories about probably yours, all right? As a, as a matter of fact, my oldest sister's principal in Port Island was in this future year. Now, is, if you want to say, well, you couldn't go to Calhoun or Port Island or Anderson, because, no. My grandfather and most of the people living in the Chatham Heights, Steve, I hate to say, but they were farmers, trappers, pick moss, and what did they do like my grandfather? They did some moonshine, and they didn't want any outsiders. That's one of the reasons that most of the schools were white trappers. They didn't need, like, uh, plantation where they needed labor, they were all family owned.
Mr. Floyd, now.
Yes, ma'am.
The school system is tied to the same one parish, public school. Today's a whole different generation from years ago, and that's exactly what I wrote to the judge and told him. This, Calhoun wants to be saved. I was approached by the director of the charter school, and I told her, we're going to meet later, we're trying to figure this out, but if it hap, if it doesn't go through, our next step is to build a charter school. And I was called by people from Booker Rhodes, from Coker Home, and they're more than likely, they're willing to bring their children wherever you build this school, if it happens, they're more than happy to bring their children to the charter school. And this is a public school system. This is not a Calhoun of white school system.
It was built for the kids in Calhoun and that area. It just so happened that we'd be white.
If you want to speak, just read the end. And we'll let, we'll give you a couple of minutes.
The community was, the, the schools were built, when you talk about a neighborhood school, those kids, the schools were built for those farmers' kids, the fishermen's kids, whoever was in that community who did not access the travel to St. Markville way back in the day. The kids, it was, it was a white community. It's no hall of our own that we live in a white community, just like areas that have predominantly black, YLC is a predominantly black school. That's the kids that live in that area.
Yes.
We know if we're going to get our kids on a bus and having to travel, get on the bus at six fifteen in the morning, it's a ridiculous situation that these groups are coming in and telling, oh, y'all need to shut your school down because y'all have too many blacks, or you have too many whites. It's crazy, these kids are in their neighborhood, and that's how the school system should be. Close the home, close the path, close the people they know, where it's safe for them. It's a ridiculous situation that Calhoun got closed because of this stupidity. Somebody came up and said, oh, y'all have too many whites, oh, you have too many blacks. These kids don't see colors. The kids don't see colors.
Well, it was, the Calhoun school was built because in nineteen twenty-seven, when it flooded that school, because I know, I have a cousin, she died now, but she was the, one of the first teachers over there, and she has pictures of the bus, you know, the bus was, a boat that was, tarts on the side when it rained, when it didn't rain, the tarts were rolled up to the top, you know, and the, the government is letting, allowing just these groups of people to come in here, and it's costing the school board millions of dollars, where we could have taken the millions of dollars and put it into education. But now we have to put it in attorney fees, and we have not enough money to do what we need to do for the education of the children. And that's what's upsetting to me, you know? I mean, i- i- it's beyond believable of how many parishes these people went against, and it cost each parish, St. Andrew Parish, twelve years to get out of that desegregation, twelve years. Twelve years, how many millions of dollars? I don't know, I don't know what the exact, the exact amount, but twelve years, here we are, we went five years and it's over a million for us, you know, and it's going to be more, because we're not finished with it.
We discussed them ourselves, I believe everybody on board, they voted to, you know, feel that.
There's a motion, no second, so let's move on.
There are more than Mr. Floyd, that's just to, that's what I said, we want to thank us.
Discussion of the governor's initiative to vaccination for all, keep all students in the state, more prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Floyd, and all it is, discussion and all the masses, just to, because I'm going to put on next month's agenda, is to see if we can get water proof approval to have possibly, Mr. Boyd, draw the resolution to send to the governor, and my opinion is that if an individual, and I said this last meeting, and the head start, if an individual wants to take a shot, that's totally different. If they don't want to take the shot, that's totally different. A person, you know, I heard a statistic there on the radio pertaining to the mask mandate that's always being talked about, but Harvard and Yale, which is probably two pretty good schools, came up with a study that these masks, the cloth ones, are probably around five percent effective. That means that ninety-five percent non-effective. The other ones, what is it called, N ninety-five or whatever, they're somewhere around eleven percent effective. So who's this, and, and in beginning, all you heard was, uh, the leaders say that these masks are going to prevent the spread. Nobody knows that, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask, nobody's going to tell you that. If you don't want, stay away from that person. But just like the shot, I think it's an individual right, because I'm not, and I'm going to just use Mr. Steller as an example, just if you don't mind. Mr. Steller, let's say he has a heart condition, he goes in, he's being forced bodily, I'm going to go take that shot, but yet this cardiologist is telling him, you take that shot, you're going to have some serious, serious side effects. So who do you listen to? The governor, who thinks he knows it all, or do you listen to your cardiologist? So that's my opinion about, and when, when I heard that he was going to push, like the state of California, I said, maybe the article will be California. I wouldn't have a problem with that. But I think that we need to come up with a resolution, give it, if it's passed, and I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to speak for other wardens, just speaking for myself. I'm going to bring it up on next month's agenda, to try to get some of this, this, basically right. So if you could possibly do some research for us, Mr. Boyd, I would really appreciate it.
I would say, Morgan, if you want to do something, that they should be that LSA is going to have resolution on the floor, bring it to the states that are still, enter the government, that you probably put on tonight's agenda, and we can probably have it on LSA agenda also, have something for the government.
Yeah, but half of these guys, they just back pocket for us.
Well, you never know. Most of the guys, they, they'll vote on their decision, they'll bring it up, and they just want to support the resolution even higher.
And that's at the next convention, that, uh, convention.
Uh, you still have time to put in a resolution. I, I'd say, you know, if it's okay with the board, that Mark, uh, turn it off the resolution, say we can do something with it. You know, if you ask my board, I'm going to waste time and say, look, come next year.
So when I got my packet, and I saw a mandate, head start, you either take that shot before January the thirteenth, or you fire. How would it happen if, if in the regular, every other employee? We're supposed to, the, the superintendent appoints and we fire, but now the mandate says, either take a shot or you're fired. And that's what I'm upset with, all right?
And that's my point, you know, if that individual's right, you know, and that's all I'm trying to make.
Well, if I can pull the board to, because I, I like to see it in the press, the Mark resolution goes to the LSA and the government. So, uh, do we have anybody that's going to be, uh, not supportive of Mark and the board, or we can suspend the board's policy?
Need to suspend the policy. You want to vote on it, need to suspend the policy?
Do you want to have anybody that's against it? You can vote no, but I'm saying that's part of the agenda, so that way, that way we can bring it up to the LSA.
If you want to vote on it tonight, need to suspend the policy and then vote.
It would be the, the formal resolution, um, Mr. Boyd, to, to state that we're in, we're against the vaccination mandate on our employees.
So you need first key to motion to lift your policy.
And how much, if it's just a two, three vote?
Two, three votes to lift policy and a majority to do it.
I'd like to make a motion to lift our policy, to add an item to the agenda tonight and vote. Well, we have the motion.
Yeah. Yeah, you, you're just letting the policy to allow action tonight.
Action, yeah.
Motion by Mr. Steve, I need a second. About Mr. Steve, uh, and who, and that was the suspend our policy. Yeah, two, three vote, uh, vote. And then? Mr. Johnson? Okay. Motion Garrett.
You know, my motion would be to come up with a resolution and to possibly draw up, but he's saying at the LSBA convention, and also the governor, you know, to basically state that we're against a vaccination mandate on our employees for not only regulate it, but it's.
We got a motion on the floor. So. We need a second.
A lot of students.
It's, it's, it's. Let me ask you a question, students, let me, well, that was also the students also, right? Yeah, student, okay, students and employees, it's the both of them.
Mr. Blen?
Just one of the choir.
Okay.
Yeah, they're students, yes.
Students and employees. Do we have a motion by Mr. Steve, I need a second for that resolution, second by Mr. Steller. All the table, vote. I'm, I'm going to vote no. And then, yeah, we have, uh, three nation. One name, Mr. Johnson. Okay. Motion Garrett. I'm going to vote no, if you want to come aside, vote with it. Okay, so going to item number seven, executive session, vote to go to executive session, vote on Mr. Steve, second by Mr. Steve, vote to go to the next session.